So I'm gonna go ahead and call the June 15th, 2021 work session to order. Now I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Ms. Walden?
Here.
Dr. Lee?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Ms. Shinholster?
Here.
Mr. Mullins?
Uh, here.
Mr. Chambers?
On his way.
All right, we do have a quorum present. So at this time, I don't have any comments for tonight, Mr. Griffin. So I'm gonna turn it over into your hand.
Um, I just have a few before I think we'll be going into closed session. Uh, just wanna give everybody the latest update on ARPA. Um, before the mayor leaves tonight, she will assign the terms and conditions. And we and Shay and I anticipate that we will be able to get on the portal tomorrow and request our funds. Uh, I say we anticipate we will. They opened it yesterday and closed it today. So I think maybe they they may have gotten a few more hits than they were anticipating. But we will, we we have to have all of that done by June 21st. And we will certainly, um, we will certainly have that, uh, have that done. And, uh, I talked with department heads at the executive staff meeting last Wednesday. And talked about, uh, getting prioritized lists from them for us to look at and see if we could possibly, uh, do what they send with ARPA money. And, uh, I'll actually be meeting specifically with Chief Swickert and Chief Collier tomorrow, uh, as well as, uh, Mr. Hadden and Mr. Veal. Uh, Mr. Hadden and Mr. Veal, obviously for water and sewer projects. Chief Collier and Chief Swickert, Chief Swickert for radios and body cams and Chief Collier for radios because I anticipate we're gonna have to swap over all of our radios, um, within the next 12 months. So, um, that's what we've got going on with that. And, uh, Mayor, I think we need to talk about some, uh, personnel pieces as related to the budget that we need to do in closed session. So, uh, with that, I'll turn it back over to you.
Were you able to get Mr. Chambers in?
He's, he's, he, I clicked to let him in. He should be coming in right now.
Okay, so at this time, I'm gonna entertain a motion, uh, that we go into closed session pending personnel and litigation matters.
He is, uh, he's joining as we speak.
I make a motion that we go into executive session.
Second.
And properly motion is second. Call the roll call.
I said real slow, maybe he'll be in. Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Dr. Lee? Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
All right, so this time.
Madam Mayor, I think you need to announce that no action was taken while we were in executive session also.
Thank you. No, uh, actions taken in, in closed session as we return back to open session. I'm laughing, Mr. Davis, Attorney Davis, 'cause Mr. Jordan said I didn't have to do that.
Oh, you, he did? Okay, well.
Okay, go ahead. But Ms. Walden said I have to.
Yeah, I did, 'cause I always had to.
Okay, so I guess let's, what do we wanna do? Just go through these and talk about the different positions? Okay, like the four police, four additional sworn positions with Police Department. What, what are we doing with that? I'm going down my checkoff list. That was what you asked, Mr. Mullins, that pie in the sky, could we pull it off? Could we pull it off on the last one?
I, I, I have a question about that, Mr. Griffin. And, um, I, I was looking at in the same, at the same, on the same list that you have, the requests from the department heads. You also have the overtime from the departments. And I don't have a current one, um, year-to-date. The only one I have, but I noticed that the Police Department had $98,000 in overtime. So my question is, these sworn positions at the cost of $272,000, how much overtime would that cut out?
I don't know that I can really give you a, a correct answer on that because the majority of the overtime for 2020, 2021 was based on, on, um, the additional details we did downtown, uh, as well as coverage when, uh, officers had to be out due to COVID. So if you go back and look at 18 and 19, where in 18, 19, where there was a little over 105,000, 19 and 20, where there was a little over 116,000, um, I don't know, because I have not looked specifically at those figures. I think what, what we could share with Chief Swickert, if those full positions were approved, is that they are, they are approved with the expectation that his overtime would be reduced. And we could certainly make that a part of what we're tracking from expenditures in his department. Um, I, I don't, um, uh, for 18, 19, I don't, in 19, 20, I don't know what that, what the, and, and actually, part of 19, 2019 and 2020 could be pandemic as well. Because we were, we were, uh, in the pandemic about three months of that budget year. 2018, 2019, I, I don't know, 'cause I haven't gone back and looked at those, looked at those records to be able to give you a, a, a correct answer on that.
Yeah, 'cause I, in my thinking, I'm thinking that, you know, if you, if you need additional personnel to handle, 'cause I know he mentioned when, when he was talking to us, that a lot of times those guys have to go out and work those calls at the Bostic Building and work those calls for Central State Hospital. And then they spend the majority of their time after shift doing paperwork, which that means that we're paying them overtime. So that's why, why I was wondering. And that's with the regular staff. So I'm wondering if, if you have four additional officers, is that going to cut down some of that overtime or would, would it cause their overtime to increase?
Well, I would say if the four additional officers are approved, that it, they would be approved with the expectation that it would decrease overtime.
There's a certain thing you just can't get around, like you're talking about, that paperwork, you gotta do it, white, fresh on your mind, if I'm gonna write it down.
Right.
Lots of thing like that right there. And I hate to put them in a situation if you need someone to call.
Right, right.
Fire Department, other's, is Police Department, you know, person, you need personnel. Get them in there, you know? You, no situation escalate or nothing like that, you know? You could've avoided.
I was just curious. That's my curiosity.
Well, I'm saying it's a situation where maybe some, might be on National Guard or something like that, you know?
Well, he does, he does have, he does have one individual that is on active duty.
Active duty and stuff like that.
Um, that, that could be part of that. I think he's only got one of those right now. I believe he has another one that's currently in mandate school that could be potentially in that situation. But while in mandate school is not, that is not, uh, uh, an issue. So, uh, you're right, Mr. Mullins. I, I know that there is one in that situation with, within the Police Department.
Well, if, if he's fully staffed, then when personnel takes off or thing like that, is it enough to cover or, or they call in then or what? That's what I'm curious about.
Well, he's fully, if you can get the ones he's, the ones he's got in mandate school out now, he will be fully staffed. Uh, he, he has not been fully staffed until he gets these out of mandate. So that could be another place that some of the overtime is coming from.
Okay.
That he's having to cover the shifts with.
Okay, so how's this salary increase going to help? I know his concern was about his entry level and being competitive at, at his entry level. So how, how will the salary increase help with that?
Well, the across-the-board salary increase, obviously the people that are there will get that. And, um, you know, we would have to do, we would have to do a, a budget amendment to, um, to make the starting salary for that position a higher, uh, amount. But if we're looking at doing the salary study anyway, I would say that that would become part of that salary study.
Okay. So I, I guess my question is, so how are we, uh, to the council? What was your consideration on that for three, two, or one? We have the figures right here in front of us. Or just wait?
How would we look and we would go with three?
Say what now?
Shay. Is Shay?
Yeah, she's here. It's, I think she has the $204,062.
With three.
Right, I see that, but are, are we able to do that? That's my question.
I'm wondering why I get you talking about Shay.
Financially.
Well, I, I think the thing you need to understand is unless revenue increases, the only place you've got to pull money from to pay for positions that are funded through the general fund is either from fund balance or from making up the difference with the enterprise funds. So do you agree with that, Shay?
Okay, and that's what we, yeah, that's what I.
So, so, so would that cause strain? Because I was looking at the report that you gave to us last, um, last week. And I think I remember, I need to find it, that the general fund, we had more going out for expenses. Is that right?
That's right.
What, we, we have, and, and the, the percentage of revenue on that is a little bit inflated because, because the CARES Act money went into the general fund. So that created a higher percentage of where we might have been this time of year had the CARES Act money not been included in that.
Okay, I got that, yeah, okay. Thank you.
Okay, so that, all right, that says some good light on that. Then it might not be, um, easier to do right now.
What, what I might suggest, if you wanna do anything, is possibly do two.
Yeah.
And then let's see what our revenue looks like in January, just see if maybe we can add the additional ones from there.
I'm good with that.
Agreed.
Okay. We'll, we'll try that and see how that look, let's see how it looks after, once they do the budget figures and see how that looks when they run the figures again. Okay, and then the next one is the utility maintenance operator?
Those, those would all be fully funded by Water and Sewer Enterprise. But I mean, that is additional monies coming out of that, so.
That can come out the general.
Out of the water main.
I think, I think a big piece of those, um, based on my conversations with Mr. Veal is, um, is, issues at Central State Hospital. The, the problem we have out there is when, when we have an issue at Central State Hospital, it tends to be a very, very big issue. They, they may be few and far between, but when they come, they are, they are really large. The, the documentation that, if I remember right, there was not, um, the documentation or reasoning that you, that you should have in your, um, folder from what was originally sent to you was that, um, with additional people, they could focus more on water and sewer main replacements, which we probably will be able to contract out with some ARPA money, at least in the next couple of years. And the other thing is that currently they have the same exact amount of staff, uh, that he previously had before obtaining Central State Hospital area. I would, i- if we're gonna use the Central State Hospital piece as documentation for that, um, I would like to have maybe another six months of revenue generation from Central State Hospital to see what those amounts become, especially with the largest water user that's gonna be out there right now, just, just now coming online, um, and seeing if maybe we could do something with that in January.
Okay.
So, um, basically, the employment, people we talking about employing, gonna come out of enterprise fund, except for the Police Department come out of the general fund?
Police Department and public works people will, well, and some public works people will come out of their enterprise fund, like Stormwater and Solid Waste.
Solid Waste, Solid Waste will take care of, it should take care of enough.
Yeah, and, and we don't, we don't have any new positions in Solid Waste, so we're, we're good there. We actually have someone out of the workman's comp at Solid Waste that we may be able to take care of that in the next couple of weeks, uh, to fill that slot. But it is, I, I don't wanna get ahead of the game, but any changes that you make in public works, um, as I mentioned earlier, um, you move a crew leader over to Stormwater, which is coming out of the enterprise fund. You get a new laborer out of Stormwater, which is coming out of that enterprise fund. You're decreasing a position that's funded by general. So if you look at public, if you, if you jump down to the public works requests that start with G, um, then you're looking at funding two of those positions, one of them being new with enterprise fund. And then your other position would be the facilities maintenance worker, which would be, be general fund.
Is Solid Waste still making a profit?
Uh, it, it is, um, not as much as it was at one time, but it, it is, so.
Yeah, I guess, I'm just, I'm curious about, 'cause I think over the year, we've been pulling a lot, a lot out of our water fund to accommodate everything. So I just wanna slow it down some bit, somewhat.
Well, what, what, what we try real hard to do is only pull out of water and sewer, basically what has to be charged to that. In other words, we make a, we, we, it, in order to zero, not zero out, but balance the budget in the general fund each year, whatever payroll and those kinds of things that have gone to water and sewer and Stormwater, and that money is transferred back in. Two years ago, was it two years ago, Shay, we only transferred 500,000?
Um, last year we only did 500,000.
Okay, so.
Maybe the year before, maybe somewhere close to that.
Right, so really, the, the biggest, the, the last biggest year we had, um, and if I have to buy it out of my own pocket, we're gonna have a new projector before too long. The, the biggest year we've had, I, I think if we go back and look at the budget, is, was 2018. So we have, we have balanced the budget on paper with, with funds from water and sewer, but we have not, we have ended up not transferring that budget into the year.
Well, I guess.
That's great.
'Cause I think in, I think in 19, 20, we actually balanced the budget on paper with like a million and a half, wasn't it? And, and we only transferred 500,000, so.
Well, I don't, I don't have a problem transferring, long we, long we have enough in our contentious fund, you know? That's the main thing, we have enough, you know, for a rainy day.
Yeah, I get, I get, um, plus the other thing I wanna do too, is I want us to have a full year working within the transfers that we've done with water and sewer, to make sure that our calculations on that have been, have been right. And, and we, we are taking the money that's being paid for the water and sewer system transfers that are part of the service delivery agreement, or part of the water and sewer agreement that came from service delivery, um, and just right now putting that in a reserve fund.
On page 27, um, it's in the fire, fire departments, um, it says constructional service. It's got down here, um, the travel. Where, where he's, he's requesting, um, I think it was 15,000, wasn't it? Let me pull my line.
His new budget?
Yes. Painting and building and, it's the middle of the page, it's the painting and the building.
They actually been doing the work themselves up there, haven't they?
Yeah.
Well, there's been a good bit of work already done at Station 2 that came out of 2012 splotch. So, um, I keep losing Mr. Chambers. Let me find where you are, Ms. Walden.
My budget, yeah. It's under, I think it's travel 15,000 is what he has, looks like that's what he has requested. Probably need to get my magnifying glass to look at it, look at it.
That is what's shown there. He does not, um.
15,000 just for travel, right.
I'm looking at his requests.
It is 15,000.
All I have in his request, Shay, is, no, wait, hold on just a minute, is permission to retitle positions. Yeah, he, he has, right. He, um, he does have his people doing more training than they were doing under the previous fire chief. So that, that would account for a good portion of that travel. Because that travel includes lodging as well, like when they go for training for, at, in Forsyth or wherever they may happen to go, so.
So are they gonna be, are they gonna be staying at the, uh, facility that they provide for the training? Is that where they're gonna be staying?
Uh, no, ma'am, they typically stay in a hotel when they are there because, uh, it's my understanding that, uh, GPSCC is now charging for someone staying at that facility. And it winds up being a, basically a wash between there and, and a hotel in the area. Yeah, you know, used to, when you paid for, when you paid for the training, that included but that is no longer the case from what I'm stating.
I didn't know they had changed that. But is this, is this 50,000 for their uniforms and things like that? Is that for that, uh, stuff that he said he, he was gonna need to buy for them? Like the turnout gear and that kind of thing?
I know for 19, 20, it was 68,000.
Yeah, so.
He's requested 50,000 this time.
That, that, that does, that does include, um, rotation of some additional turnout gear. He, um, which we can actually look at from a, possibly a capital improvement place. But I, I believe he's, um, hold on, let me make sure I'm telling you right. In his five-year capital improvement plan coming out of general fund, um, he is showing $10,000 a year for turnout replacement. So $10,000 of that based on his capital fund request would be for replacement of turnout gear.
So he requested 50,000 this year.
But then, but then you also have, I mean, you have the, their daily uniforms and, um, you know, they're wearing nomex uniforms now, so that is not, those are not cheap.
Do you know when is the last time they made purchases of uniforms?
They've been, they're stated purchasing.
Yeah, they, they would be, they would be purchasing them throughout the year as new folks come on and as they need to replace those who are already there.
All right, so this is for new, uh, new, um, firefighters?
Not solely for new, no, ma'am. But new, new would be, they would purchase it for new, but it's also replacement for the current firefighters.
Okay, so, okay, you, you answered.
Hank, I guess I'm, I'm curious to know, I know that when he came for 19, 20, they spent a lot because they needed to.
Right.
At that point in time. And then last year, he was granted the 29. And so far this year, he's spent 25. So I guess the question was, would, um, could we reduce that 50,000 to, to make the burden or, or 25 to cover it? And then you'd have, well, I don't, I don't know, just looking at it.
Well, I mean, that, you know, that's certainly something we can do and, and, and just, you know, but one, one of the things that, um, that I encourage department heads to do is to manage their budgets well. I'm not sure that's always been the encouragement, uh, that they got. If you, if you do that this year, I mean, if you do that with this budget and then, you know, the time comes that he needs additional money, he'll have to try to document it at that, at that point in time. But the other thing too is to remember that, um, we, we cut operating expenses by 10% last year because of our concerns with COVID. So anything that you see with this current budget, um, has the potential to be a little bit wonky because of that 10% cut.
'Cause, I, I mean, everything is going up.
It is.
Prices on, everything is increasing. So I, I know that as far as services, that we don't have an option of doing, like the gas, of gas and diesel, you know, he went, he went up on that. I understand that because that's an unpredictable cost right now. But, um, you know, just putting 50 dollars in, in there, just, you know, just to be buying clothing, um, additional clothing, it's just not, um, not something we need to do because we're going, like you said, with, we were trying to be cautious, 'cause we don't know.
Right.
And everything is so overinflated now. E- e- even when they travel to hotels, the travel money is gonna take a hard hit because that, that has increased so much. And those that have to travel for training, you're gonna find out that all of those costs are tremendous right now.
You know, I, I think, I think there are things, uh, across the board with all departments, but there are specific things with emergency departments that are, are given.
Right, right.
And, and, you know, with the fire department, uniforms and turnout gear, turnout gear are given.
Right.
So what my preference would be, if we're gonna look at, um, reducing something, is maybe reducing things like office supplies and operating supplies and those kinds of things that don't, that don't take away a part of what they need in order to do their job.
Things that are mission critical.
Right, right.
But what about the vehicles? How old are those vehicles? Because I'm seeing there were four that are requested. Do we need four new vehicles?
Uh, probably, probably so. And there's still some 2012 splotch money that could possibly be used for those.
So it's needed?
Right. And, and, and those vehicles are not, are not firefighting apparatus. It's, it's, um, like battalion chief vehicles and, and utility trucks and, uh, those kinds of things.
Yeah.
And I don't wanna, I don't wanna get this wrapped up in, in our budget talks, but I have. I have, I will be coming to you all to talk in the upcoming budget year about the potential for selling the rescue truck because it is no longer being used and does not give us any credit for ISO. So that may generate some revenue there that we can do something with.
I I honestly believe with both, looking at both of our emergency areas, as Mr. Ross just said, this is just changing over time that it's gonna be needed. Because I know all of us see the fire truck running up and down the road twenty-four seven.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna need to start putting some in reserve for a new ladder truck before.
Show our house fires and everything is increasing.
It's hard to believe that ladder truck is twenty-one years old, but it is.
And when we talk about vehicles, cause I I I agree with you all that those, those things are aging and we're gonna have to look at that real soon. That was one, again, one of the reasons why I said we need to have a plan in place for for five years and then start at that third or fourth year, going five years beyond that so we can know the lifetime of these vehicles. When you talk about vehicles, I was telling, sharing this with Hank. When I'm on my way home from Macon and I get in Jones County and and at sometimes it's on the way between Macon and Jones County, I always meet a city vehicle. And my concern is, I know that, you know, we talked about in in years past, people taking vehicles home to their communities because it's good to have that, you know, feel in the community that you have somebody there. But when you're going that far, I don't know how effective that is. So my question to you all is, do we have some rules that, you know, that needs to be in a certain range? If they're going to be taking the vehicle, because that that puts a lot of wear and tear on vehicles as well.
We already have something in place, don't we? Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Thirty mile radius.
Thirty mile range.
So they could go to Macon then technically.
Well, that's, that, that's thirty miles round trip though, isn't it?
Thirty mile one way.
Thirty mile one way.
So that kinda defeats the neighborhood thing then, don't it?
Well, no, it's.
Cause they can't do a thing in Macon?
What they saying is that typically vehicles last longer if just one person drive that vehicle. They're swapping over vehicles. You know, because we had one officer that lived up in Atlanta area, but he would go to Mon, drop it off and stop it in Monticello, get a person vehicle and go the rest of the way, just to keep us, you know, just have that one vehicle that he drove all the time. That's, you know, that's the logic behind it.
That's a good logic because everybody on Drive is saying.
Well, I'm saying, that what they're saying, you know, that one, when the one person that drive the vehicle all the time.
Well, and too with police officers, you know, they've got equipment that they can leave in there all the time and that kind of thing if they're the only ones driving it.
Do we have that many vehicles?
About thirty.
Forty something?
For police officers, each officer has their own vehicle.
Yeah.
And the detectives and all of them. Okay, I'm just curious. So is it any other questions or concerns that we?
Well, I think that, and just go back to church, that that not unusual because most police and fire department have like a twenty-five, thirty mile radius. Live within that radius. I think they could be up kind of fire department like a twenty-five, thirty mile radius, yet live within that radius.
Okay.
Are we saying that everything that is requested for the fire department are needed items?
I think if anything is decreased, we probably just need to look at decreasing operating supplies and office supplies and those kinds of things as opposed to decreasing emergency gear.
And are they complete with the work that they're doing? Cause they're doing that work themselves, so they're gonna have to have.
They're not doing it all themselves.
They're not doing it?
No, we we contracted the roof, we had to contract plumbing. And but that's all coming out of splotch. That is not general fund expenses.
And and your general fund expense, you just talking about like the the copier, the paper and stuff like that that goes in office.
Yeah, you know, but back to them vehicles, even like the fire department now, now this is my personal opinion, it's only that. You know, you don't go out and buy a vehicle every day. And I don't wanna, I've had attitude just called the new model come out, you know, we want a new model. And I, you know, I I believe in providing good equipment. Something wrong with equipment, buy a new one. But just just because I want a new model, I don't wanna see all that now.
I I agree with that and I can, I can assure you that when a request comes to me, it has to be well documented. So I I, and I, you know, one of the things I've mentioned to y'all before that I hope we can buy in the next budget year, we'll just have to see where it can possibly come from, is a, an asset management system that would work with public works and utility maintenance and water and sewer and everywhere. And one of the assets that would be managing would be, would be vehicles. And what that asset management system would do is when, when a vehicle, when it was costing more to repair a vehicle than it was worth, that system would notify us of that.
Yes.
And we could, but right, right, right now, especially with utility vehicles, we're having to play catch up.
Yeah.
That, that's, that's our problem right now. But if we get, if we can get close to being caught up and then have an asset management system in place, then we can create that rotation based on what the asset management system tells us.
That goes back to play with Mr. Nice was saying about the five-year changeover with your asset management.
And and you know, depending on what the vehicle is and what it's used for, five years may be too long or it may not be long enough. But that, that's a good, I mean, that's a good measure. You know, if if um, I I think the, I think the last chargers that the police department used, I think they were on a ten-year cycle, weren't they? Shay, do you remember? Right, yeah, yeah. And and that's because they were that old. Right.
Yeah, asset management system will tell you that because it will let you know when, when um, when things are overdue to be changed out and 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 also if there's an instance where you, you have a vehicle that has more miles than they deem necessary within a certain amount of time, it will remind you that those vehicles need to go ahead and be replaced because of the high mileage and and which means that the value, trade-in value or the resale value will be less because of that. So yeah, we, I I work with that every day.
And asset management system would also manage, you know, excavators and backhoes and, I mean, everything that we.
All movable equipment.
Yes.
Even golf carts.
Which we don't have any of. Don't throw that idea out there.
Oh, God, I got ten I could say.
Well, a few minutes ago, we were talking about equipment operation operator for a different. And I think it said like two, two crew, two equipment operators.
Two heavy equipment operators.
And they're for different crews, right?
Right.
So we do have the equipment for them to operate, though he not sharing it.
That, no.
That's my question.
That, no, with with heavy equipment, with heavy equipment, we do. With in 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 utility maintenance, those same types of people are called operators. And with the operators, we do, because right now we have two operators. And then, you know, you how, you also have heavy equipment at the treatment plant, both treatment plants. But but yes, we would not, we would not have two heavy equipment operators and one be waiting on the other one to get finished with the piece of equipment. That's, that's, that's a big piece of trying to, trying to create two crews in stormwater so that they could hopefully be doing twice the amount of work.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good idea. Mr. Mullins had mentioned something about solid waste and we didn't really elaborate elaborate on it. When is our, I know we extended our garbage contracts. When is that?
I think it's up for renewal in twenty twenty-three.
Is it twenty?
Yeah, but I think it's twenty twenty-three.
Okay.
Dr. Lee, you had a, you had a a question, I think you emailed me a question about solid waste that I did not answer. And I I just remembered that and I wanna tell you, based on the last budget report y'all got, some, sometimes our monthly expenses for solid waste are higher than other months and that depends on how the invoice falls. And what we do is we pay that invoice with a credit card because that gives us a higher rebate allowance on our credit cards. So oftentimes when you see one that's, that's a high month, that's actually two months in that one month because of the way the invoices fail and how they were paid on the credit cards, so.
Okay, thank you, that makes sense.
I'm sorry I didn't answer that on email. It it just hit me that I did not as we were talking about that, so.
Okay.
Saying something, Mr. Nice?
The never mind, that's not, that's not, that doesn't matter at this point in time, so. My mouse working faster than my brain.
I thought Mr. Nice was saying.
No, I was just trying to, I was trying to remember when last time we had an increase in solid waste.
I don't, I don't, you mean in terms of what's charged to the
customer?
Residents? I don't know that we've ever had an increase.
Get off that, sir.
I know this is not the time to do it, but.
I've lived in the city since two thousand seven and I've been paying the same amount since two thousand seven for for solid waste.
Yeah, so.
So it had to be, it had to be before two thousand seven.
Been awhile, so we gonna have to bite that bullet soon.
At fourteen fifty, I guess, I'm right.
You don't wanna hear Mr. Mullins.
No, 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 I think we need to figure out a way where we can cut out expenses for us, for our tipping fee and everything over there. That's what we need to be looking at. Yep.
And one, one of the things that, that, from a solid waste perspective too, that's helpful to us, especially if the time comes, if we start looking at potential for annexation and that kind of thing, is is our our recycle program. That's, that's a big deal to people, to have recyclables picked up twice a week on the curb. And cause believe me, if they're not picked up in my neighborhood on the Friday they're supposed to, I get calls.
Don't tell me about that.
You're not even talking about recyclables, you're just talking about trash in general, aren't you? But I will say the the new local person, and he's not really new anymore, he's been here about six months, but the new local person that now Waste Management has working here, he is, he is so responsive. He is just, he's, and I've shared that with Steven Edwards, that he's just really a, a good, good guy.
I'd be running a little late, but some of them, they, I help notice them get out the truck, go pick up trash if they thought they dropped it, so that's pretty cool.
And he and I have actually had some initial conversations about trying to work together on an educational piece in terms of trying to encourage people to bag their trash and not put, you know, loose trash in their, in their Herbie Kirby's though, because that's what flies out is. So we are, we are working on the potential for trying to pair up on doing something from an educational standpoint with that.
All right. Are there any, any other questions?
Can we come back to the, to personnel, if we're going down the list?
Which personnel, what you're talking about?
We, we talked about, I think we had gotten to E on water and sewer. We talked about the fact that we would, we think we can deal at least right now with the additional wastewater treatment operators through SCADA when we're able to upgrade that. So that takes those off of the list. I had shared with y'all earlier about the potential of making the changes that, that we make in public works and and that winds up having one new position that comes out of general fund and that's the facilities maintenance worker. And then a new position that comes out of the enterprise fund for stormwater for laborers. And if they, I'm of the opinion, and I, Mr. Chambers, I think you have said this, that if things are done correctly with the preventive maintenance schedule, that the facilities maintenance worker would be following that position could ultimately pay for itself just because of equipment lasting longer and those kinds of things, but as I said.
Plus less contract labor, Hank.
That's correct, that's correct. So but I'll be sharing with y'all what Mr. Thomas brought to me late this afternoon and you'll see the description of what he and, what he expects and will be expecting that facility maintenance worker position to do. So is everybody okay with those changes in public works that I mentioned?
I am.
I'm good.
All right. So that was, I I'm done with personnel now, so.
All right, then if you don't have any other items to discuss in reference to the budget tonight, I wanna ask for a motion to adjourn.
Can I ask one more question? Cause I'm really trying to get to the point where y'all approve a budget next Tuesday night. So, so with these, with these changes that we've talked about tonight, we'll go ahead and make those changes in the spreadsheet, get the new spreadsheet to y'all so you can see the bottom line on all those things. And that will be the budget that will be up for adoption next week. Is that good with everybody?
Yeah, I'm good with that, but can I say this? If the, as far as you all are concerned, if the revenues and what we've, you know, put a request in, if that doesn't, if that's not working, then we need to know.
Oh, absolutely.
Honestly. We need, we need to know because we may have to go back and and and, you know, adjust it some type of way.
Right. I I believe in terms of the, the new positions that have been approved tonight, we can sustain that.
Okay.
We'll just, the ones, you know, we'll just have to look prior to January to see if we think we can add the, the others. And of course, we know we've got, we know we've got the staff compensation piece taken care of because of 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 taking the other positions, the two positions that we talked about out of the mix, so.
The other, the other thing that I was gonna ask you about was, was you had touched a little bit on annexation. When, when are we going to look, I mean, get into that, seriously?
We will get into it whenever y'all tell me to get into it.
Get in, do it.
Okay.
What'd you say?
I, I will be getting into it.
Yeah, because I know that before anything is done, it requires a lot of legwork. You know what I'm saying? For, um, um, we're looking into things and and and, you know, deciding on an area and.
We've got, we've already got some of that from previous years. The, the, the biggest thing we would be looking at would be getting the updated property descriptions that we have to have, but that, that can be done. I mean, the, the, in in terms of the island areas, they have already been identified.
Okay.
And that, that to me is the low hanging fruit for annexation. And then we can talk about some of the other areas that, that have the potential based on us having the right-of-way piece. We do have one area that one hundred percent of the residents have requested annexation.
Is that still Greystone up there?
Stone, Stonecrest.
Stonecrest, I mean, not Greystone, Stonecrest.
If, if you, if you read the annexation guide, the only thing up there that we touch is, is our sewer easement. So I don't, I'm, I'm having to work through that with Mr. Jordan to see if that's a possibility.
I, we hate to turn him down, though.
I, I, I would too. I, I, I would too, I would too. And, and.
That's a nice tax base right there.
While, um, while the guy that GMA puts forth does not necessarily say anything about this, I'm wondering if maybe a, a large part of it might not be based on whether a county disagrees with the annexation and if, if, if there's a disagreement with the, with a county, county in general, with annexation, I'm wondering if maybe that's when the requirements for, uh, a certain distance of touching city right-of-way and those kinds of things exist, so.
Contiguous.
Right. You all, you. Well, we do, we do have a sea sewer easement there.
So that's a boundary, that's a contiguous.
It comes, it comes across there and picks up their lift station.
Okay.
And then takes it over to the gravity-fed system that we have behind Greystone.
Okay.
You think, you think Greystone or Stone Crest, which one are you gonna?
Stone Crest are the, is the area that has, that the residents have asked to be annexed in.
I thought they, I thought we had a situation where it, did they ever, the road, did they ever put the roads in the city, annexed?
In Greystone?
And Stone Crest.
That's what I'm done now.
No.
Huh?
Not, not, Stone Crest has been put in the city.
I thought because, you know, I thought we, I thought we had a situation, they didn't come up about some street lights or something one time up there, Stone Crest? A sidewalk or somebody.
I think that's all when we talked about, that was when we started talking about their annexation, that we talked about street lighting and all of that.
Right. I don't think there was a request, though.
And I know we didn't make an agreement.
Okay, I thought, but you, now you talking about, you says Stone Crest and you got, uh, Greystone. Greystone went back up to, to that property off, uh, Court Bridge?
Court Bridge, yeah.
Greystone does, does, but Great Stone Crest is the one that we got specific requests from the residents.
Okay, Stone Crest. You know? Now continues.
But, but Gray, Gray, Greystone is between Stone Crest and Court Bridge.
That's the problem.
Okay, but I'm talking about Stone Crest, though, though that, down that road, golly, yeah. Down that road is the county. All right, man.
County with two city properties, they're, they're requesting some stuff from the city.
Okay.
Well, we, we will, um, we'll get the spreadsheet updated, uh, get hard copies to you. Uh, Mr. Reynolds, I know you want one electronically.
Yes, please.
Um, and, um, look over that and let me know any questions you have and, unless you all choose differently when we have the, that will be what we will vote on on Tuesday night, so.
No other questions or concerns? Um, let me share one thing with you all. The Juneteenth, uh, celebration they'll be having at Walter B. Williams, not Walter B. Williams, Central City Park this weekend, we did give them, uh, they requested a proclamation. Um, so at this time, I don't know how we're gonna get that done 'cause I won't be here and Mr. Shinholster possibly won't be able to attend. And if so, Mr. Bowdell have to come up and get it.
It's ready.
It's ready, okay. So, other than that, if it's, no other questions?
One more thing.
Okay.
We got one more question too, I could, but.
Wait a minute, hold up.
I'm just gonna sit back there and y'all just tell me when it's ready.
Did we ever decide to have a retreat and talk about different things in the city?
We, we, well, I, I know that that's something y'all want. Um, I, I guess my question, does y'all wanna do that before GMA? Do you wanna look at possibly doing it as part of GMA? Do you, do you want a full-blown retreat or another local retreat? Or how, how do you wanna?
I think it'd be great if we could wrap it into the GMA if at all possible. We'll all already be there, we've already got hotel stays taken care of. Should be easy enough to just wrap that up into that week if that works for everyone else's schedule.
Who's not going to GMA?
Ma'am?
Who's not going, everybody's going?
I think everybody's going.
Okay, good.
Which, which bears another question. Uh, do we need to, and, and obviously we'll vote on it at, at a subsequent meeting, but do we need to go ahead and plan to cancel that first meeting in August? Because that's the day everybody will be.
Yeah, right.
You have that six, if you have a six-hour training that day, you'd, you'd never get back, so.
Right.
We'll, um.
Do that on the next.
We'll cancel the first meeting in August for.
Um, and talking about GMA, how successful were, were we with getting the classes that we needed? And what, what exactly do we have if we didn't get that?
I think they had some issues, but I, I was not a part of that, so I can't, I can't speak to that.
I think Miss Walton might have been the only one that got a call.
What?
But now, but now, I do know that everybody's information was sent to Erica to be put on a waiting list. Um, so, I actually got some classes, I registered myself.
That's discrimination by age. That's discrimination.
I was able to get some because I still have not had them all like y'all have.
Oh, my gosh, there's nothing else to take.
They need to offer that annexation class about fifteen times.
Fifteen times and, and one session. But Miss Walton, that is age discrimination.
I bet Chambers had them, right?
Mr. Chambers, go ahead.
Mr. Chambers, I'm sorry.
I want to ask a quick question about the code enforcement position, has it been advertised?
It has not, but it will be in the next two weeks.
Yeah.
Please.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, see where Bibb County, Rob Peter and, uh, to Pay Paul and got them two more positions and thought about us too.
I know, right? We really need, we really.
We really need to.
That's the main topic we talk about.
'Cause we need to deal with blights.
Right, that's the main topic, one more time.
Well, I, I, actually, I am talking to the city administrator in Byron tomorrow night, uh, for us to compare calendars. She's a friend of mine from, both of us having a previous life in economic development.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they have actually passed a blight tax in Byron and she has sent me a copy of the ordinance and I'm gonna, I'm gonna meet with her in the, in the next couple of weeks and pick her brain on that, so.
Wow.
That'll be good.
Interesting.
All right.
All right. No further questions or concerns, I need a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Second.
Everybody's ready to go, did you get that, Mr. Bow? Mr. D'Neese?
Thank you all, have a good one.
You too, Ms. Dudley.